That's good to know. Okay, so I don't think you see him, Joe, at all?
Tom Hauser, I do not.
Tom Hauser, okay. He lives on Javaro Street. I don't have an exact. I don't have an exact address for him other than Javaro Street. I know he's, Todd, he did, he did email you too, right? Okay, all right. Let me just get this up here, his email. This gentleman emailed us last year for the same, same issue. And I told him I would bring it up for him. So it sounds like on the evening of the third. This is Fourth of July holiday and I know in my neighborhood, I get firecrackers through a whole week, you know, which people celebrate and I think people have been, you know, a house, you know, you know, not being able to get out now they are being able to get out. I think they're over celebrating, which is fine with me, by the way, it is a celebration, but he's concerned that last year at this time, he complained that they were shooting fireworks into at his driveway towards his house. And that was something that was a concern of ours at the time. This one here, I think the neighbors have moved a couple houses away, but he was worried about the time of the ten to ten fifteen. So I told him to, you know, I told him about my neighborhood. I told him about, about fireworks going off this time, how people celebrate. He was concerned about his neighborhood. I was more concerned about the fact of it being dry out there with, for fire than anything else right now. But as far as celebration of fourth, I told him, he was, he was requesting a police car to stop around ten to ten fifteen. When these fireworks were going off, he sent us a video of it. Todd, did you watch it, by the way?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Actually, I thought there were very nice fireworks, by the way, I did. But I told him that if I were to get a squad car down between ten to ten fifteen, that doesn't mean they wouldn't do it from eleven to eleven fifteen. So they're, it's the Fourth of July. So I told him if he had a concern, as what Todd told him last year, would be to call nine one one if he had a concern. Am I right on that, Todd? That's what you mentioned, Joe, last year, something about calling nine one one?
Yeah, yeah, we just urge residents to call when they're actually seeing these. Of course, officers, you know, out there in the area, they're gonna see them as well. And they do their best to get around and interrupt what they can. And it's at their discretion if they're gonna, you know, cite somebody or take the fireworks or whatever the case may be typically. It's, you know, they begin with a warning. They understand the time of year and people want to celebrate. So they kind of, you know, give people the benefit of the doubt unless it's, you know, repeated over and over. And obviously, if it's, you know, one in the morning versus nine thirty at night could, could weigh the difference in a, in a ticket as well. So they do their best to get around. But yes, we, we definitely urge to call when it's going on. You know, we're twelve miles long here, so we're not gonna see all of them as we're out trolling. So give us a call. We'll do our best to get around. We did get a handful over the weekend, which is pretty typical. I don't believe any citations were issued, but I know there, you know, there were some contacts made and kind of just telling people to knock it off. We got a complaint. Here's your warning. And it tends to settle down after that. I don't believe we had any real excessively late complaints. It was around that ten, between that ten and eleven o'clock hours, so.
Yeah, like I say, I get up to the whole weekend, people celebrating. I don't, I don't know how to, you know, I mean, I know he sent us this discharge of firearms and explosive. It is unlawful for any person to fire or discharge within the areas served by any city utility, any cannon, gun, pistol, or other firearm, firecracker, skyrocket, or other fireworks, air gun, air rifle, or other similar device commonly referred to as a BB gun, or within five hundred feet of a residence in the rest of the city. You know, it's once a year. I told him, like I say, that I would bring this up. I told him again to call nine one one, which I don't know if he did or not. Again, this changed from the year before where they actually were shooting towards his house and he found debris from the fireworks in his driveway and stuff like that. That was a concern at that time. Again, my concern, of course, is the dryness of the area. The little rainfall we had today is not gonna help much. So it's still pretty dry out there. So is there anything else, Todd, that he can do other than what you told him and what we're bringing up right now? Anything else that this gentleman can do each year from now on?
No, I mean, it sounds like he's, even last year, it sounds like you did more than, than most people would do. He actually made contact with them neighbors himself and it seemed like they were pretty cooperative. So I'm not sure if it's the same neighbors this year or not. It sounds like it's a combination of three or four of them, which again is fairly typical in some neighborhoods. So I don't think there's anything more he can do. We get the frustration. We get the frustration from both sides, whether we're, you know, interrupting and telling people to stop, or we're not enforcing it hard enough. But again, we kind of follow that same practice. You know, typically we'll make contact, give people the benefit of the doubt, especially this time of year. Tell them to quit it if we get another complaint that could result in the, you know, ticket and/or firework confiscation. So he's doing the right thing. You know, again, it's, it's not a priority call technically. So if the officers are tied up on something else, that could delay the response as well. So there's a bunch, bunch of different variables that could go into it. But I would just urge him if he, if he reaches out again to keep doing what he's doing. And if the officers aren't seeing them, we need to know where they're at. So we can again, get over there and at least be visible, maybe deter people from, from doing it so much.
Well, I also want to say that I think he, I think he, you know, it changed from last year because this was, this house that was doing it this year was different address. So farther down the road from, you know, a couple, two, three houses from him. I think this is concerned now was more not, not the shooting at his houses. It was the noise at ten, ten fifteen. Although our noise ordinance goes from seven AM to ten PM. I just, I just would tell people is you have the nine one one ability to call. And I know some of these people get carried away with fireworks because I saw that video as well as you, Todd, and it looked like those were some pretty big fireworks. But at the same time, it is a holiday and you gotta be a little flexible, a little forgiving during a time like this. If it was going on every day for a month and all that, after the holiday, I'd probably be concerned and all that. You do have the right, again, to call nine one one. That's must I, I said I gave him and I should have given him now. So I don't think there's anything else we can do at this point except for him to watch and again, requesting a squad car in the area. Can he, can he do that, Todd, at all, or?
Sure. And I did pass that information on to our, to our officers working that night, that timeframe. And that's, and that's great. That's perfect because it really narrows it down. You know, if we do have somebody available, we know what time to get over there. So we're not kind of, you know, sitting around for an hour waiting for these fireworks to pop. If somebody can narrow it down, especially to a fifteen minute window, that's great. So I, I can't confirm that the officer did make it there between ten and ten fifteen. Again, if some, something else kind of trumps that and, and you know, higher priority, they're gonna respond to that first. But that information is great. So people can do that and narrow that timeframe down. Perfect. It really helps us out. Get over there at the right time and try to intercept it.
No, I also think it comes down to common respect and common courtesy. I think some of these people, they say, get, get carried away with the fireworks. I mean, I'm starting to see fireworks locally. They're just as good as the parks I see from Anoka County and that size of them. And the rockets that they're putting out. So I guess it's just a matter of common, common respect, common courtesy and call nine one one. If you have a problem, try to narrow, narrow down the timeframe for that, that going up and see what, what we can do for you. All right. I want to thank everybody for that. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna move on to the next order of business. Anybody else on meeting over the public show, by the way, or is that it?
Now would be the time for anyone who's here to address the council with an item that's not on the agenda would be the time to do it. I don't think there is anybody present, Your Honor.
Okay, then moving on to seven, public hearings, item eight.
Can we, can we have a minute to talk about the fireworks or?
Okay, if you have something.
Is that informational only?
Yeah, no, please say something if you have something.
I'm on the far other end of this, I'm sure. You know, I, I can't say for certain how many states legalize fireworks, but I think it's a waste of resources of the police department to go out and try to police fireworks. Is there anything that we can do, Dave, to, I know the state, you know, has made it illegal to purchase. But can the city have an ordinance two days prior to the Fourth, two days after the Fourth, legal to use fireworks that are a little more lenient in the other, I don't know, thirty or so states. I, I'll give it a rough thirty. I won't say all the other forty-nine of them, but I'll give a good thirty of them that I consider people reasonable people and the, the state of Minnesota has deemed, you know, that we as adults are irresponsible enough to, to blow a firecracker off here and there. Is there anything we can do, Dave, to make an ordinance or something that makes it legal to enjoy our Fourth of July celebrations? Because I know Colorado legalized marijuana, but the federal government still says it's illegal. So there, there's a lot of things I think we can do to not waste resources on, on firecrackers and fireworks. That's my concern. Any of that, Dave?
And councilmember, members of the council, my understanding is this is going to be a state issue. The state has occupied the field on it. And so they're gonna be providing direction. It's a little bit different than a marijuana issue where you've got a federal and a state thing. A city is a creature of the state. So when the state sets the, the law on that, that is what needs to be followed. I think that the chief has already pointed out that depending upon what the response time is in, in regard to other priorities and the discretion of the officer, there's some flexibility there in terms of enforcement. But again, this is going to be a state issue and it'll be up to the state to make a change in that.
Thank you.
Let me ask Todd this, you know, because I mean, you know, we're talking about, it's funny, we, we talk about ordinances and ordinances and we've had a discussion before and some of the council members don't want to have more ordinances, yet you bring up an idea of printing orange off for a Fourth of July fireworks. I mean, you know, I mean, where do you want more government? Where do you want less government? I, let me ask you this, Todd. Have you, have you had a lot of complaints about fireworks over the years where we should have an ordinance in place to limit when people could fire a firecracker? I mean, you know, I, I just find this as a, as a Fourth of July celebration for the independence of our country. However strict you want to get with telling them that they can't fight, let off a firecracker. I mean, well, how many complaints have you gotten over the years that would make this arise the occasion of setting an ordinance in place to restrict the time they can do it? How many days they can do it?
Well, again, a majority of our complaints come over the, the holiday itself or the days surrounding that. I mean, we do get a handful throughout the year. But again, a majority of them are just around that, that Fourth of July holiday. So you know, the state, the state does restrict the actual possession. I, I don't think we could really, you know, we couldn't really, like Dave said, allow people even set off firecrackers if the state doesn't allow it. I don't think we could even touch that. So you know, there are legal fireworks. Of course, they're, I'm not gonna say they're fun because they're, you know, they're not. They're kind of boring, in my opinion. But it is what it is until the state loosens their grip on it. You know, I don't think we're gonna be able to do much on expanding on that. We're gonna have to, again, that's why we, we allow officer discretion. I would say we don't issue a lot of tickets. Again, most people are cooperative. We should, you know, if it's, you know, if it's ten o'clock compared to one in the morning, there's gonna be a lot less leniency probably on behalf of the officer. But if it's ten o'clock and it's Fourth of July, it's Sunday. We get it. You know, people want to celebrate. So again, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt. We'll give them some time to shut it down. You know, again, if it's one in the morning, there's gonna be probably handle differently than ten o'clock. So officer discretion definitely, definitely plays a role in it.
All right. Thank you, Tyler. I wasn't gonna open this up for discussion, but seeing as Rob has now, I want to get some feel from council on this. So Sarah, give me your comments on, on your take on this issue.
I don't know, I guess. I don't, I don't mind fireworks. I don't. I'm not too worried about them. I mean, I guess my main concern was, you know, all the vegetation fires that were popping up. And I don't think, I'm not sure that we had a lot, but in Anoka County itself. It was, I mean, I have an app, Pulse Point, and that thing was, I had to turn my phone off because it was just constant. And it was, it was nine times out of ten, it was a vegetation fire. So I'm, I'm sure Dave can attest to that, too. So, um, but you know, I don't mind them. I don't, you know, I can't really handle the, the light of them. So I just sat inside, but um, I have, I don't, they just don't bother me. So I'm fine with people setting them off. You know, I think, again, you hope people will be reasonable. I mean, I heard people shooting them off at two and three in the morning still, but it wasn't like huge love. It was, you know, and I'm sure the neighbor neighbors probably didn't enjoy it much, but you know, I, it wasn't like it was, you know, super bad at that time, but there were still people shooting them off at that time. So, you know, I think that's a little over the top. I'm worried, I say.
Let me ask you a question before I pass this on to another member here. So have you gotten any real abusive, like late hours beyond like eleven o'clock timeframe, ten thirty, eleven?
I would have to look back this year. I, in reading reports here yesterday, I didn't, nothing caught my eye like that. Again, most of them, I believe, were between that ten and eleven o'clock hour. So there may have been one I missed, but typically we don't see a ton of complaints. And the, the complaints we receive at that hour, again, unless they're tied up on something on a higher priority, they're gonna respond to that pretty quickly and shut them down. I, I don't really recall this year anyway, over the fourth, a lot of complaints in that timeframe, so.
Right. And that video that I saw, by the way, that you watched too, also, it was, you know, I mean, there, there were some fireworks, like you say, of a larger size there. And I can see some of the complaints and noise and all that because I mean, it's just not little, little firecrackers. It's some, you know, some people get carried away with this to celebrate. We know how, you know, you know, people, like I say, common respect and common courtesy goes a long way. And I think we're losing that in today's world. But, but that's what's really necessary to keep people, you know, be appreciative, you know, have fun with them. But look, you know, look at the timeframe, three o'clock in the morning, which I heard some is a little, a little ridiculous. And then big rockets booming in air that you could see at the parks. I mean, the same thing cities are doing. I think it's a little, you know, a little much, but it is the Fourth of July. Kevin, your response on this at all, your take on this?
I don't really have anything in addition, Mayor. I don't think it needs any more governance or any more regulation than it has. And this is our third Fourth of July together as a group and it hasn't become a concern other than a few concerned citizens, which they have the right to be concerned. And it sounds like the chief has responded accordingly. So I don't think there's any further governance needed. And actually, in my neighborhood this year, around ten fifteen, they stopped, which is unusual because during the summer, it's lasted longer than that on a non-holiday time. So I'm good with what we've done so far.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Joe, your comments?
I really much to add. I just say if people are passionate one way or another, they should talk to their state representatives and/or run for state.
Good idea. Rob, you any follow up on that or can we move on?
Um, it's not that I want more governance, you know, it, it's basically a state law that we look the other way. And until somebody, cities get together and draw a line in the sand and tell the state, but you know, government goes up as, as much as it goes down. And if we all just kind of look the other way, nothing will get changed. So I think if we get cities that, that go to the state and say, hey, we're, we passed an ordinance that allows fireworks. It's similar to city fireworks. I, I, it just baffles me that I can't, I can't grasp why we restrict our residents as much as we do. And then we have our celebration for the city and we have, you know, ten thousand dollars worth of fireworks going off. And the state says that fireworks are illegal and we're not trusted individuals to set off a fire, fireworks. So I'm actually looking for less government by enacting something that our residents can, you know, come to the city and sign up and have a, a big firework display if they want to have it. By all means, that's kind of where I stand with it. It's, it's actually less government than I'm actually pushing for. That's it, though. I know it's not gonna change today.
I, I think we should leave it like this. There hasn't been any complaints to rise it to a, to rise it to the level of getting an ordinance put in place at this time. So if Todd, you know, over the years, we'll just monitor it, see where it goes. If the complaints get outrageous and, and like I say, my only real concern about this gentleman bringing this forward is not the noise so much. As long as it was done around the ten, ten to eleven, you know, you know, our mark, you know, our, the timeframe versus the, uh, uh, risk of fires from a dry season. That's my main concern here. So that's your was concerning on his property this year was concerning noise. My concern again is the dryness and, and fires that Dave and, and the fire, and the local fire departments have to fire, which they have at the fight rather, which they've already done this year so far. So I just would leave this up to, you know, let's just keep monitor it, keep on top of it. It becomes a problem. It rises to occasion of an ordinance. We can address it at that time. Um, I think right now, if we put an ordinance in place about fireworks on Fourth of July, we think, I think we'd get more flack than it's worth right now at this time anyways. So yeah, that's enough said on that issue. Let's move on to the items at hand, okay? Seven, a public hearings, a vacation of drainage, the drainage and utility easements over outlot C, second edition, and I'll add a fourth additions of the Rivers Edge subdivision. Item one, resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-four, A, resolution vacating the drainage and utility easements over outlot C, second edition, and outlaw a fourth edition of the Rivers Edge subdivision. Beth, that would be you, I would believe.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. All right, let me get this set up here. All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is an easement vacation request that's related to the fifth edition of Rivers Edge. So the Rivers Edge fifth edition final plat was approved at the last council meeting in June. And as the applicant has been plating final plaits, they've been establishing drainage utility easements over the remaining undeveloped portions of land. So every time there's a new addition, these easements need to be vacated before the new final plat can be recorded. This vacation requires a public hearing in line with some of the stricter state requirements for public notices. And typically, this is something that's done simultaneously with final plat review. However, for the fifth edition, staff did not notice for the public hearing for the vacation in the timeline that's allotted by the state. And so the vacation itself had to be moved to the next council meeting. So the fifth edition is located on land that was previously platted with the second and fourth editions of Rivers Edge. Therefore, the applicant is requesting the vacation of drainage and utility easements over outlot C of the second edition and outlot A of the fourth edition. So this is just a reminder of what the fifth edition looks like. The fifth edition includes forty-five lots as well as multiple street segments. There are twenty-six lots on the west side, which you can see on that bottom picture. And then nineteen lots on the east side, which is that top picture. So just blowing this up a little bit so that you can understand where these outlets are. This is the east side of the, of Rivers Edge. So the left picture there shows the Rivers Edge second edition, that's outlot C with the drainage and utility easement covering it. On the right side there, that's the fifth edition now. There's thirteen lots as well as an extension of Marigold Street that are included in what used to be outlot C. Similarly, this is the kind of western side of Rivers Edge. So the remaining piece of the fifth edition, so all of the west side, those twenty-six lots, as well as the western coast six slots on the east side. Those are all part of the outlot A, fourth edition, or that's the easement that's covering those right now. So staff is recommending approval of the vacation of the drainage and utility easements over outlot C, second edition, and I'll add a fourth edition of Rivers Edge. So the suggested motion is on the screen as well as in your packet. I believe that's page twenty-seven. And I am happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Beth. You know, I want to make something clear here. Every outlot has drainage on it. Existing outlets have drainage on it, but in, in, once it goes under a development, then the drainage, of course, is gonna change as it gets platted out with homes and slots. So really what we're doing is taking a raw, a raw setup, a raw area of land that has drainage on it normally, just by nature itself, whatever. And we're now taking, digging it under development with lots on it and having to redirect the drainage under a platted development. Is that correct? That be the easiest, easiest way to say it?
I believe that's accurate. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just so council understands what we're doing here. We're just taking, we're just re, re-directing the drainage from undeveloped land to developed land. And the drainage, of course, will change as you lay out the lots for sale. So that's what this is about. So I have no problem with this. Good work by HKGI. And I'm glad to see that development, you know, from the first phase we dealt with years ago to the fifth edition. I'm very happy about that right now. So Kevin, any remarks you have on this? Any comments?
No, Mayor, I don't. And thanks Beth and Craig and Kate for doing what they do. And they understand it far better than I do. But I'm glad to see this edition fall through as well. Thank you.
Joe, your comments?
I would just second what both you gentlemen said.
Okay, thank you. Sarah, your comments?
Ditto.
Okay, Rob?
No comment about it. It looks good.
Okay. So do I have a motion to adopt the vacation, vacation drain, the drainage and utility easements over outlot C, second edition, and I'll add a fourth additions of Rivers Edge subdivision? Do I have a motion?
Ma- Mayor, can I? We need to do a public hearing on this one.
Public hearing on that?
Yep.
All right. Then I tell you what, at, I will open a public hearing on Tuesday the sixth at six thirty-two.
So now would be the time for anyone who has to comment on the matter to address the council and get it down the record.
Joe, anyone I see here?
Does not appear anyone is here for public comment. So it would be the mayor's decision to close the public hearing and then consider the request.
All right, I'll give it a few, a little bit time more. No, closer, six thirty-four. All right. I'll close the public hearing on Tuesday, July sixth at six thirty-four. I'll move on to a mo-, do I have a motion for vacation, the drainage and utility easements over outlot C, second edition, and I'll add a fourth additions of the Rivers Edge subdivision? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Mulebar makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Oderick makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, Diana, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Edveig?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Mulebauer?
Aye.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye. Okay. Moving on to resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-four, A, a resolution vacating the drainage and utility easements over outlot C, second edition, and I'll add a fourth edition of the Rivers Edge subdivision. Do I have a motion? Anyone?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Councilor Robinson makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Bauer makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, Diana, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Edveig?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Mulebauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Mayor Feldman?
Aye. All right, thank you. We'll move on now. Okay. All right, item nine, new business. A, a variance for two, three, zero, zero, eight Navarro Street Northwest, PIDs thirty-one dash thirty-four dash twenty-four dash thirty-three dash zero, 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 three and thirty-one dash thirty-four dash twenty-four dash thirty-three dash zero, 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 two. A resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-five, A, a resolution approving a lot of frontage variance for the property located at two, three, zero, zero, eight Navarro, Navajo, rather, Street Northwest. Also, an item B ordinance, so that's, that's her she's fee schedule. So that's it right there. Is that Kate or is that Beth on this one?
This one is me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
All right. Mayor and council, before you tonight is a land use request for the property located at two, three, zero, zero, eight Navajo Street Northwest. So the site that we're discussing tonight totals roughly forty acres and includes an existing single family home and accessory structures on the eastern side of the property. The site itself is split into two lots, one larger lot and then one smaller lot, which is about five acres along the eastern side. Existing structures are located Existing structures are located across both lots currently. Sealy Brook runs through the property east to west, as you can see from the screen. So north of the brook includes the existing structures and is farmed. The southern piece of land, south of Sealy Brook, is open space. So the applicant is seeking to reconfigure the lot lines of the two parcels. So that the parcels follow Sealy Brook as their boundary line. And this can be done as an administrative adjustment, so no city council action is needed for this part of the request. The reason that it's in front of you tonight is because the applicant is also seeking a variance to lot frontage as part of that reconfiguration. So just a little bit about the administrative adjustment, since it relates to the variance request. Sealy Brook is a natural boundary for the site. As you can kind of see from the image, it's difficult to access the southern portion of the site from the north. Due to the wetland complex of Sealy Brook. So the applicant's goal is to adjust the lot lines so that Sealy Brook serves as the dividing line between the two lots. The movement of those parcel lines would allow all of the existing structures to be located on a single lot. And would also allow the landowner to sell the southern parcel, that parcel B. So all city lots are required to have direct access onto an improved public street. Parcel A, which is north of the brook, accesses Navajo Street through several vacant lots to the east. Two-hundred-and-thirtieth Court is also stubbed right to the eastern property line in this location. There is no direct access, however, for parcel B, which is the the land south of Sealy Brook. And that's why the applicant is requesting a variance tonight. There is an existing private access easement, which is that red box that you see. And that easement runs from the southwest corner of parcel B, south to north Norris Lake Road. And it allows parcel B to be considered a developable lot. So this site is located on the southern border of Saint Francis, and it abuts both Now Then and Oak Grove. The easement that serves parcel B, which is shown in that dashed line. It actually runs through both Now Then and Oak Grove before connecting to Norris Lake Road. So this easement is very important for parcel B to remain a buildable lot. This easement needs to be maintained. At their June meeting, commissioners confirmed that parcel B does have access through the existing easement, which makes it a buildable lot. So after the public hearing and discussion, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the lot frontage variance. So tonight, City Council has the opportunity to approve, deny, or table the application. The suggested motion for approval of the lot frontage variance is on the screen. It's also on page twenty-nine of your packet. And I am happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is here as well.
All right, thank you, Beth. So if the applicant shares, state your name and address and any comments that you have, please.
Julie Dickinson, and I actually live out of state right now. The property is two-three-zero-zero-eight Navajo.
Okay, any, anything you want to enlighten us on, Julie?
My brother lives there on the property and is not able to really access the southern part of the lot. Across the creek, and there's some interest with the neighbor who lives on that end. Who would be interested in purchasing the property, so we've been working to move that lot line. And also, it keeps all of his buildings on one lot as opposed to being spread out amongst two. It's just.
I can see that the river's been the hardship of it, with the They have natural divide. So let me ask you, how many acres are on this southern portion?
I can tell you as soon as I find my survey.
Oh, yes, I think it's thirty-six point thirteen acre piece of land. Is that split in half? So eighteen some acres, I believe, something like that?
Eighteen, eighteen point six-nine is on the bottom and twenty-two point six-two is on the top, Lot A.
All right, and and so you're just inviting out to give hit this sell this to this gentleman here. His plans for are just to add to his property from what I've seen in the packet.
Correct.
So question for Beth is, should this land ever be developed, developed, the easement would have to be replaced with a permanent road structure? For egress and and in and out, right? Or can it be developed or not?
So Mayor and Council, that easement that's there right now would allow a driveway to be put through that area. So if there were to be a single-family home put on that southern parcel, they would be allowed to put a driveway through. It wouldn't have to be a full road.
Right, but would it, could it ever be developed out with more than one home on it, and then what would happen?
It's fairly unlikely that that would be developed with more than one home. It's guided for agriculture in our comprehensive plan, and the density is fairly low. So we would not be allowing A higher density development there. Our sewer and utilities don't, aren't planned to reach this area. So it's likely to remain either a fairly low-density development or just open space.
Okay, and one other question I have for it, so the easement in place, you know, satisfies the Ability to put a driveway in later on for a future home. What if that easement, is that in perpetuity or just part of the agreement that we're making now?
Mr. Mayor and Council, that easement has been in place for a while. It's not something that was new as part of this application. But we are requiring, let me find the correct condition for you. There was a condition that we added to ensure that, you know, the applicant is aware. That that easement is what's allowing that parcel to be buildable, and if that easement ever were to be removed. That parcel would no longer be considered a buildable lot for the city.
Okay, all right, that answers my question, so I'll pass this on for comments. Rob, we'll start with you.
That was my question with Now Then and Oak Grove basically being in charge of that easement. How does the homeowner or landowner per se Guarantee that that easement won't be shut down by Now Then and or Oak Grove?
Yep, Mayor and Council, that easement is between two private parties. So it's not, not with Now Then or Oak Grove or Saint Francis. It's between property owners themselves. So they would have the ability to determine if it, if it stays or goes.
But not the property owner that actually needs it. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, it's between that property owner and then the property owners to the south.
Okay, so it is between the north, north owner and the south owner who's buying the extra land. Okay. Well, that makes me feel better too, by the way, so, all right, because it benefits them and no one else. Okay, Rob, anything else you have to say on that?
No, that's it.
Because that was my concern too, by the way, but that makes me feel a lot better. Kevin, your remarks on this?
Thank you, Mayor. No, you both had good questions, Rob and you, and again, as long as the potential buyer is protected and the current landowners Are passing this on, it's, it looks like it'd be fine to me.
All right, thank you. Joe, your comments?
Yeah, pretty much the same thing, and I think she already mentioned too that the owner of the south, the adjoining property, are they Already there is the one that wants to buy it anyway, so I don't know why they would get rid of the easement to begin with.
All right, Sarah, your comments?
My questions were answered by your questions, Robin here. So yeah, I think, I think it's, looks good and should be, should be done.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, on that, thank you, Beth, for your work on this, Kate and everyone, Craig and everyone else that worked on it. Let's get a motion on this. The motion for the variance two-three-zero-zero-eight Navajo Street Northwest, I'm not going to mention the PDs again. A motion to adopt that variance. All right, Councilmember Robinson will make the motion, Councilor Newbar makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, Diana, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember, I beg.
I.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
I.
Councilmember Bauer.
Nay.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
And Mayor Feldman.
Hi. Motion passes four to one. All right, the motion to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-five A. Or thirty-five, a resolution approving a lot frontage variance for the property located at two-three-zero-zero-eight Navajo Street Northwest. Do I have a motion? All right, Councilor Oderick makes that first motion, Council Robinson makes that second motion. Any further discussion? By that, Diana, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember, I beg.
I.
Councilmember Robinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Mulebauer.
I.
Councilmember Bauer.
Nay.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi, thank you. Motion passes four to one. Okay, thank you for your work on it. Good luck to you, Julie. I think that hopefully some problem for you. Make two happy owners. That would be nice.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, moving on to item nine B, ordinance two-six-seven, second series of many fee scales, first reading.
Unruled Mayor and Council, in front of you is some proposed changes and updates to the fee schedule. I do want to add verbally, there's a couple others that will be adding from now until the second reading for your consideration when you approve it tonight. One would be that the hardware store is no longer doing burn permits. So that's going to fall into our fire department, and we're going to recommend a ten-dollar fee just to process the burn permit. And then also, when we're reviewing the ordinance updates for the bed and breakfast. Apparently, there's all kinds of fee structures out there for bed and breakfast, but we thought, just in the interim, we have no applications active. But we suggest adding a hundred-dollar fee just as a placeholder. In case someone did apply between now and November, when we traditionally update the fee schedule. So those two additions will be on the proposed changes along with what's in your packet, and I'll certainly try to answer any questions you have.
All right, listen, I have for you, as I've looked over some of these amounts. You have checked with other cities what these amounts are, because I'm seeing some differences there, and I'm kind of curious of why. Like, for instance, I'll look at, and I'll look at You know, temporary habitat permit went from two-hundred up to five-hundred dollars. That's one of my questions there. Another question I have here is, let me find this one here. Is Let's see if I can see this one here. The kennel commercial went from twenty dollars a year up to ninety dollars a year. So I'm wondering, did you look at other cities or they're charging, or are we in that, that, that That amount is right or wrong?
Yeah, and I can let appropriate staff and answer that, you know, typically what these fees are supposed to cover is the cost of the city to process it. Right, so an applicant comes in, we want to cover the city costs, including time to process such an application per user, you know, they pay the fee. For the city service that they're particularly using. With that, I'll turn it over to, I believe, Kate, those fall under your purview.
Mayor and Council, so To first address the Temporary habitat permit, so that is actually an adjustment due to just completing one. Council had approved one last June, and we have learned over the last twelve months that The staff time involved in that process, we were way underfunding that permit versus the actual. And and with that increase, I would hope to even break even. With the kennel permits, we did review, so we used to have it based on dogs. So it was the first four dogs were fifty dollars a year, and each additional dog was twenty dollars. So when it comes to a commercial kennel, to have them counting dogs versus what's coming and going can be very difficult. So to mirror what other cities are doing, we just set base prices, so there'd be a kennel. This is for the kennel license, and it would be either a home-based permit or a, or a commercial permit. And then we wouldn't be trying to count dogs or justify the number of dogs that are going on. Those are those two. I'm happy to answer any of the other ones as well.
Well, that answered my questions. Thank you, Kate. By the way, Dave or Joe or Kate, on this burning permits, are the, as are this, is this fee in effect now? And people are able to get burning permits through the city effective now?
So I think they can get them through the city now. I'll let Dave speak to that, but the fee has to be set on the fee schedule in order for that to be official.
So we are, we do have the ability right now to process burn permits. We did send out a Facebook message. Probably three weeks ago that we took that over. But we can't charge anything until it's adopted in the fee schedule, which is why it's before you tonight.
Okay, so basically you get a permit for nothing right now until we adopt it on the, by the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
All right, all right, good work. I mean, I'm glad, you know, I'm glad you're clarifying this because under, you know, I mean, we always have to take care of the staff time. And and processing these, these licenses and whatever, and and to go on the whole over it would be ridiculous on our end, so. Good job they're keeping up to date. All right, turn this over to Rob, Kevin rather, on your comments.
Thank you, Mary. I have two questions. One, on the building permit evaluations, or not, yeah, building permit. Have these, have we done any comparables? I know in the last two years, some local surrounding communities and even the media was involved as far as Charges equitable to what's going on and, you know, building in Oak Grove compared to Saint Francis or Now Then, et cetera. Have we done some comparables on that? And, you know, the old saw that you hear, I've heard three, four years since I've been here. Was that it's hard to build in Saint Francis, da-da-da-da-da. Well, that's old news, of course, but How about dollar-wise, is it, is it equitable to come to Saint Francis and is it Comparable to other neighborhoods surrounding us?
Mayor and Council, so when it comes to our building permits, I usually review those at the end of the year. Because we do this in November, and I do try to compare with the other cities that are surrounding us. I believe we're, we're in the same ballpark as many figures or other cities. I know the state statute dropped their amounts. But, you know, they, some of that gets dropped to a point where I think it would be difficult for our staff To manage them for those fees, so we try to really balance what the state statute is, is recommending versus what we're doing. But these, I'll compare these before the end of the year, and we do this again in November, so.
So the state can recommend, but they can't mandate for us to be in a certain parameter per se, Kate?
Correct, so state statute actually outlines a set of valuations. But then we, once we, we've adopted these numbers, so we locked these in at one point, and then we have to review it from year to year to see if we want to Change it or if we want to stay where we're at, so.
I know the cost of labor and stuff has gone up, at least on everyone's end, but have, when was the last time these were even looked evaluated or changed? Plus or minus?
Oh, Mayor and Council, I believe we did these Maybe two, two and a half years ago, so that I know they've, they're, they're fairly recent, but we didn't do them last year, so.
Okay, but you have a, looking down the road, you're going to be taking a look at the end of the year, so that's a good thing. Second question, burning permits, and with our four-day work schedule, how does the fire department accommodate somebody on a Friday or Saturday for a permit? And will there be online possibilities to do this as well? Oh, there's a couple different questions there. One is, we, at the fire department, I work Monday through Friday. So it's not a Monday through Thursday schedule.
Okay.
When we did advertise the change on Facebook, we advertised the phone number to the fire station, so if we were out on a call. If I was in Now Then at that time, that they could call, leave a message, and I would contact them back, and we would make sure that their burn permit was processed appropriately. As far as How we, you know, make sure that we have some continuity moving forward. We do want to identify with some relative certainty in the future on days and times when people can come in And have a burn permit processed. Certainly, the challenge is, and in In reality, I'm the only full-time person there, so To have some regular staff hours to process these permits right now isn't necessarily the most easiest thing that we can do. But we will work towards the future in having some consistency in processing these burn permits as we move forward, so. I hope that answers your question. And would there be any opportunities? I mean, maybe the technology isn't there, or it's there, and we haven't looked at it yet, which would be awesome, but To do an online situation where you get an email per se, chief, somebody's used their credit card, popped the ten bucks in, name, address, they can't Until six PM and got to be out before six AM, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a conversation we had with the DNR. Lisa Mueller is our representative from the DNR. Anoka County is not qualified for the online burn permit process at this
Anoka County is not qualified for the online burn permit process at this point. That may change in the future, but as it stands today, we cannot process burn permits online in Anoka County and that's directly from the D N R.
Okay, all right, appreciate it. Thank you, Kate. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, Kevin, Dave. And Kate, moving on, Sarah, your comments?
Um, no, the couple of questions I had on these were, were answered. So I think, I think it looks good. I like the hard work that Kate puts into, to check and see, make sure that we're. We're at least in the ballpark because sometimes, you know. Like you say, you think you're in the ballpark and you realize that you're either way over or way under. So thank you, Kate, for your hard work on that. I appreciate it a lot.
All right, thank you, Sarah. I would agree with that totally. Joe, your comments?
Uh, no, I really don't have anything to add. Kate usually stays on top of these and we see these come through periodically, so. That's all.
Okay, Rob, your comments?
Nothing to add. I'll agree with Joe in this one, look through the packet and all the changes look pretty good.
Okay, all right, on that, do I have a motion for ordinance two six seven, second series of many fee schedule, first reading, do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Council member makes that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Council Robinson makes a second. Any further discussion? If not, Diana do a roll call, please.
House Member Edg.
Hi.
House Member Robinson.
Hi.
House Member Mulebauer.
Hi.
House Member Bauer.
Hi.
Mayor Feldman.
Hi. All right, motion passes five, nothing. Okay, moving on to scheduling a work session.
Mayor and council staff looking to schedule a work session. We would prefer in it, well, I think it's probably going to have to be, but preferring in person work session for the weekend, July twenty-sixth.
All right, and that's going to be an in person one. Reason why it's still in July? So what's the reason?
So there's a number of visual aids. We can certainly try to do it via Zoom, but there, we're anticipating a number of visual aids because it's kind of some complex. Land use stuff, talking about the future sewer extensions within the city, kind of a lot going on. We could certainly try it via Zoom. But we just thought that we were going to have a lot of posters and things to walk through with the city council.
All right, sorry. Community room to do it.
I'm sorry, you cut off for a second there. What was that?
Conference room or the committee room?
Um, you know, probably the community room. I think something like that might work. Not a hundred percent on that. I think the bigger space, you know, we're not out of the woods yet in COVID. We're certainly going to try and. Keeps the social distancing and everything, but I think the community center would work best right now if we, if it's available.
Okay. All right, so what day are you looking at? That week of the twenty-sixth? So. Conflicts with school or anything, you're not in that right now, right? You're taking a break from it. So you have no conflict there?
They aren't having a, a meeting that day anyway, so that's fine.
But you can, you need to take a break from it anyway. Okay, so. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Any comments from the council on what day they prefer? None? Okay, so let's go. Monday or Tuesday, which one would you guys like? Monday or Tuesday, five thirty at the community center? Community room.
Monday.
Monday? Rob?
Monday.
Joe, everybody? All right, let's do it on Monday, the twenty-sixth. Okay. Let's see.
The conference room over by the police station, is that bigger than the, the community room or?
Um.
Idea, Joe?
It, it maybe, you know, it, it's probably going to depend on availability and, you know, we'll certainly take all factors into consideration and try and. Make the most logical decision as far as where we have it.
All right, so let's, right now, let's just, let's just set it for the committee room, but if you feel you need to move it to the police department, then just let us know, okay?
Okay.
Okay, all right, so this work session will be on Monday, July twenty-sixth at five thirty at the community center for now. Change, just let us know which way it's going to be, okay, again?
Yep.
All right. All right, that solves that problem. All right, I'm going to put this down. Seven, twenty-six. Five thirty P M. Okay. All right, moving on to item D, city council meetings. Joe?
Mayor and council, so we got some updates from the league and some, you know, just other city peer groups. On meetings and bringing them back in person at the end of the emergency declaration that just happened. There is anticipation, anticipation that that was going to happen August first, but it happened a little bit sooner. So it all, I mean, there's some requirements here as noted in the staff report about having all locations open to the public so people can interact where elected officials are. Certainly a possibility. It just kind of seemed like all signs pointed towards re-engaging in in-person meetings. Probably beginning with the next city council meeting in July, but I just wanted to bring in, I guess, for your information and get a group council discussion and direction on the matter.
Well, you know, my. This is, and once again, this is what we do with our city, which just boggles my mind. I thought we had a discussion on this. And because of a couple of health issues, we decided to stay on Zoom for a while, but according to what Joe and Leo's telling me. As I checked on this is that unless one person of us stays accessible to the public, which means you'd have to be in an area different than us on Zoom. It really doesn't make sense to do it like that because of burden versus something that works with us. So. You know, I'm not against in-person meetings. I just was hoping to wait a little longer with my cancer and, and Sarah's concussion situation, but on that, I guess we really have no choice. We'll stay six feet apart and open up, you know, that one thing is sound, sound on Zoom is a lot better than it's going to be at the I S D building again. So that'll be one issue I'm sure we'll hear about. But I would suggest if we're going to do it, we move it to the first meeting of August second. At I S D fifteen, we'll give you enough time, Joe, to communicate with the school district about that.
Dave, does that August second timeline work or are we looking to do this immediately for the next July meetings?
We would need to do it in person, however, because we still have the sixty days after the pandemic declaration. Council members still have the opportunity to have the, to zoom into the meeting.
Okay.
So we'll need that one person for this next meeting and then we can start up with the regular meeting starting on, I believe it was August, is it second?
So I, so someone, one person would have to be at the public location then if we did this via Zoom in July, correct, Dave?
Correct.
So let's just say hypothetically, someone goes and sits in the community center during the Zoom meeting. That's how we would have to do it.
That's correct.
Other, otherwise we would do it on, on. July nineteenth, right?
Yeah, the next, yeah, yep. Um, so yeah, it's going to be kind of what, whatever council wants to do, you know, we'd obviously need someone to volunteer and go say, I'm assuming it would be the community center. If we had to do this next meeting via Zoom. Otherwise, I, I haven't reached out to the school district, but I don't anticipate them having any issues accommodating us on this because we have the agreement. Where they store stuff at our facility and we hold our meetings over in their building. So I don't anticipate.
Well, to be honest with you, I, I would, I would agree with you, dealing with anyone else, I'm going to let Sarah comment on this in a minute. But I would suggest, by the way, before we commit to one date, which we're going to do between the nineteenth of July and August second. I would reach out to the school district to make sure they're on the same page as we are, because I'd hate to have that schedule for the second and it not work or the nineteenth, you know? I mean, I, I don't, the communication skills, I haven't been all that great in the past issues we've discussed. Sarah, do you have a comment on this yourself?
Um, yeah, I talked to Amy Kelly a couple, well, probably close to a month back. And she said whenever we were ready to start in person again, that, you know, they were willing to let us and. Kate, I think, isn't planning and zoning, are they starting to go back and in person soon as well?
Correct. Mayor and council, our planning commission starts in person on July twenty-first at the school district building. So, and we reserve that for the next twelve months.
Okay, all right, thank you, Sarah. So on that, why don't we just start doing July? I, I, I don't want to ask a council member to be in a separate room by himself while the rest of us are on Zoom. I think that's ridiculous myself, but anyway. So if it's all right with council, why don't we just start this on July nineteenth for the next meeting? At six o'clock at the I S D building. Okay, Kevin, Rob, I see you shaking your head. Yes, Joe, Sarah, all right, let's just do that. That okay? Joe, Dave?
Yeah, that works perfectly. Just want to get everyone on board and make sure we're keeping the communication open.
Okay, that'll be at I S D fifteen then. I'm just making note of this, so bear with me a second.
Just a quick question, Mr. Mayor, would it be prudent of us maybe to? Do Zoom through our laptops, even though we're going to be in person? I think the volume is going to be way better in a recording setting in that aspect, but I'm just spitballing.
As long as everybody mutes themselves and they're not talking, but that could turn into a lot of issues too. But I'm willing to try it.
The school board did do that. They did. Do Zoom right from the room there, so. And basically, yeah, it was remembering to, to mute yourself, but we all do fairly well, I think, on here. I think if anything, we forget to unmute ourselves, so I don't think it will be too big of an issue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I did, the school board did go to the owl that sits in the middle. And I did order one for the city council. We're going to track that. That's going to be our camera and. If you look at the school board meetings. I think about the, the volume on that is a little bit better. We're going to try that when we come back in person. As long as I can get everything running.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Darcy. All right, well, let's, let's try that. If we have to, we could do Zoom or something like that or just do a regular, see how it all works out and we back into person. I, you know, like I said, I have nothing against going back in the person. Make it easier for the public to join us too, by the way. So on that, we.
Sorry, with the owl, you can have a Zoom meeting going on at the same time.
Right, right. Well, I know one thing about the staff and council, we'll make it work for sure. I don't doubt that at all. So let's just move on and go for July nineteenth on a council meeting. Okay, yes. Fifteen, okay, good, all right. Joe, second time meeting open to publics, do we have anyone?
It does not appear we have anyone in attendance that is not on our team right now, so I would say no.
Okay. Okay. All right, moving on to reports, that would be you, Dave.
Mayor and council, before you is the May monthly comparison from the standard format that we've been utilizing this year and I will apologize for the delay. We did do an update to F D M, which is our database. And we did discover some anomalies after the update. And I can walk you through those as we go through the report. The first one is on our response times. One of the things that happened with the update is our response times were being grabbed in an aggregate, aggregate fashion. So what we're trying to illustrate with our response time is the first arriving unit or officer on a scene. What happened in the update is it grabbed every unit and then created an average from that. So. If we went to a mutual aid fire in East Bethel, for example, on the south side of Coon Lake, it would grab all of that aggregate data and then populate the average response time. We have since got that error fixed in the update. So these response times are accurate for the update since that point. So you can see as we continue to trend through year to year. We do continue to reap the benefits of having a full-time fire chief and reducing those response times. From two thousand eighteen at eleven and fifteen minutes down to eight minutes and fourteen minutes for two thousand twenty-one. The next slide will illustrate our calls for service. Again, as I've been trying to illustrate in our off week memos, we do continue to show an increase in run volume year to year. This year has been a wild exception. The last run, run that I did for the entire year showed us at a fifty-seven percent increase. From two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. This is not an anomaly to St. Francis. I have had conversations with a number of the neighboring chiefs. Every department around us is seeing a pretty significant increase in run volume. And we're all struggling to kind of put our fingers on what the cause may be and, and some of this may be kind of the post pandemic, people are kind of. They're taking their guard down a little bit. They're feeling a little bit more comfortable. They're utilizing the nine one one system a little bit more. But we're certainly seeing an increase in run volume. Thankfully, even with the dry weather, the last seven to ten days, we have seen a little bit of reprieve in our run volume. Which has given our staff a chance just to enjoy the Fourth of July holiday and, and kind of catch their breath a little bit, but we do continue to see an increase in volume. Year over year as we go through. Again, we continue to recognize that our staffing is stable at this point. The good news that I can report is our five new hires are starting to respond to calls, which will certainly increase our average number of firefighters responding on any given incident. So I anticipate over the summer that those numbers from six point seven will continue to increase as we go throughout the year. We do see that, continue to see that distribution between fire and EMS rounds. EMS is certainly our driver in our run volume. That's not to forget that we've had a very busy year on the fire side of things. And one of the things that I'll try and illustrate this week in my off week memo is. We have seen a significant increase in dollar loss due to fire this year. And again, it's kind of cyclical. We see these ebbs and flows and peaks and valleys as we go. But it's certainly just not the EMS piece. We have seen a number of structured fires and vehicle fires within the city this year or so. We continue to be very busy. As we scroll down to our variance usage, we do continue to see that we could get, get great utilization out of our advanced EMS skills. One of the things that has really increased over the past two months is the amount of firefighters that we're sending with in a line of ambulance crew with patients down to the hospital. We saw that little bump in May to two, that continued into June, which shows that we're having a higher acuity of medical events within the city for at least May and June. Which isn't uncommon with the weather that we've had. There's certainly a number of medical maladies that do get exacerbated by this hot weather. And we have seen that over. The last six to eight weeks with the weather that we've had. And we do continue to track the COVID or potential COVID positive patients, which we saw three for the month of May. That number has dropped down in June. I think we're at one for June. And we haven't had any thus far in July. So we are starting to see those trends that are reported, not only from the state, but from the county. Really aligned with what we're seeing in St. Francis locally. And lastly, what is omitted from this report is our inspections and that goes back to our F D M update that took place. The other issue that we found with this update is because of our management contract with Now Then. And putting Now Then on their own reporting system. We're seeing some of those filters catch St. Francis inspections and get populated on the Now Then side versus the St. Francis side. So we believe we have that filter now corrected. And I can certainly share that data on the off week memo as far as the inspections of businesses within St. Francis. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
I thank you, Dave. Good report. Yeah, you should put that on the off week memo for us. That's always good for us to see that. You know, I have to say that I'm, I'm pleased with the, with the response times being reduced and, and better. And, and, and definitely impressed with. How our services have changed. And I think that's probably for all fire departments that I've seen fires versus EMS. But again, as I've said before in other meetings, what, what you brought to this fire department with the EMS capability that we have, it's, it's impressive. It really is impressive. To see us get out there and until that ambulance comes, we, we can save a life in the city. We have done it. We are, and we're continuing to do that and. That's just, it goes to your leadership with Joe Lawrence, your assistant chief and all your staff and that. Kudos to you and the police department for being able to do, being able to do that because. It gives our, our residents confidence that we have two public safety departments that can handle the worst case scenario, which is health, life and death. So. Both departments good, very good. I'm very impressed with that. And thank you for that too, by the way. Kevin, your comments on this?
Yeah, very good report, Chief. Two questions. Are the fire runs, or yeah, if I runs or EMS runs, is, do those numbers include mutual aid where somebody else has initiated to call in another community and you respond? Or is this totally the ones you've been, you're initiated within our city boundaries? Or is this totally the ones you've been issue initiated within our city boundaries?
Our response time uh model only includes responses within the city. Um, one of the things that we discover is because of how mutual aid is utilized in northern Anoka County in particular, um, we cover a lot of territory, especially from that five AM to five PM mutual aid agreement with East Bethel, Bethel, Now Then, Ramsey. Um, we could be going as far as a hundred and sixty-first in Ramsey. And as far as southeast Coon Lake, um, where our first arriving unit may take actually twenty-five to twenty-seven minutes to arrive on scene. So when we run our response time, it extrapolates out response times outside of the city. So what you're getting really is a snapshot or a view of our response times within the boundaries of St. Francis, which is our priority. So we want to make sure that we articulate that as best we can. So we extrapolate out mutual aid response, we extrapolate out any routine response, and we extrapolate out any response where we get canceled before our arrival. So what you're seeing is purely emergency response to scene on those response times.
Okay, and then the quantity of runs, uh, fire runs versus it, whatever the fire or EMS run, are those um again, mutual aid, like forty-four um EMS runs in twenty twenty-one so far, is that all St. Francis or your counting stuff, you assisted other communities as well?
So our response totals are an aggregate of whether it's mutual aid or within the confines of the city of St. Francis. So that's an aggregate total of every time we have been requested for service, regardless of the initiating factor.
Okay, thank you. I might have missed it the first time. I appreciate it. Also, if you send our uh congratulations to your new recruits that have come on board. I know we have, we've had closed meetings up to this point, so and people's are busy on their daily lives as well, but if the opportunity for them to ever come before the council and so we can say hello and 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 be introduced to them would be awesome. Um, they should be committed for stepping up and stepping in, as it were. So appreciate it very much. Um, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Chief.
You're welcome, sir.
Before I pass this on, Dave, my question to you on these uh EMS calls, uh, you know, with the other departments that you have on mutual aid on that, um, are they, are are you the 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 leader on this as far as the ability that we have versus Bethel, Now Then, Oak Grove, whatever? Um, are we more ahead on EMS capability than those other departments?
Uh, by far. Um, one of the things that has been a priority, not only for me, my entire career, regardless of whether it's been Brooklyn Park, St. Francis, or on the ambulance at North Memorial, um, where we have a real difference to make um a difference in outcomes in people's lives is really on that EMS side. Um, yes, we do, and we traditionally have on the fire side. Um, what we have seen is over the years, and and I'm sure Councilmember Bauer can can agree to this, is we're probably, not probably, we are an underserved community in regards to ambulance service. Um, we have a number of documented um calls for service where we have seen um, greater than twenty-minute ambulance response times. We have an obligation and a responsibility to our community to provide the highest level um, first response capability that we can do um within this community. Um, and when we look comparatively to our neighbors, we not only far exceed what they're doing, but our ability for growth far exceeds where they can go. Um, that is attributed to the fact that we have required everybody to become EMT, that all of our new hires become EMT. As the state allows variances to grow within that EMT capacity, we have grabbed on to those variances. Um, and our ability far exceeds um every neighbor around us. Um, and quite frankly, um, the level of EMS service that we can provide uh on a paid-on-call basis exceeds some full-time fire departments.
Very good, Dave. That's very good. Okay, I think that's something that's important, uh, but you know, I I just, I just didn't think that the other departments were set up as well as you've set up our department. So appreciate you bringing that up. All right, uh, Rob, your comments on this report?
Very good report and uh, Chief, I really do appreciate bringing in the the EMT aspects of that. That is a community service that that, you know, is provided a real emergency um type of aspect and not seeing the the ambulance um sitting at the station all the time now is kind of attributed to to that growth in our response for our fire department. So I would love to commend all of the firefighters for everything that they've done uh in the growth of education that it takes to become EMT. And if we were gonna go back into an in-person meeting, I don't know, let's say the nineteenth. Maybe we could do a uh pending of the new um hires um for their badges and whatnot. That that I'd like to see. So your crew's doing an amazing job and and the numbers reflected. Thank you.
And to both your point, uh, Councilmember Bauer and Councilmember Robinson's point, when our new hires complete probation, we will absolutely have them in front of council for their badge pending. Um, that's kind of our formal ceremony. Once they have completed firefighter one, firefighter two, EMT training, they still are subsequently doing their onboarding for the city of St. Francis. So once they have completed their probationary process, we will be more than pleased to bring them before council. Um, this is an absolutely strong group, and I can't wait for you all to meet them. Um, the five new hires that we have are gonna do a tremendous job for the citizens and the visitors of the city of St. Francis.
All right, thank you, Rob. Sarah, your comments on this report?
Very good report, Dave. Um, uh, I had a chance to talk to Joe Lawrence. Um, and it sounded like he thought that you guys got around eleven rotations through that house. So that was a very successful, successful uh training for you guys. So that's excellent. And yeah, I look forward to to meeting our new firefighters and getting to know them and um welcoming them to our our fire department. And um, yeah, I I'm just very impressed with like what you and and Joe together have done. So thank you so much.
Joe, your comments?
There's not really much left to say. Great report and uh uh, again, look forward to meet the new firefighters as well. Um, and keep it to good work and thank you for your service, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, David, one question. Did the, did the public works put those light bulbs in your data room?
I haven't checked, but I will tomorrow morning.
All right, let me know if they don't, okay?
It's a little bit of a struggle to get back there if you haven't noticed.
I know I had to crawl down to your little trainee thing, but I did. I did get back there. So when you can, just let me know, okay?
Will do, sir.
All right, thank you so much. All right, uh, moving on to, we don't have it listed in here, but we always do council member reports. So we're gonna do that again, as we always do. So I'll start with Joe on you, uh, your comments.
Well, I'm easy. I don't really have much to add.
All right, thank you. Sarah, yours?
Mine's about as good as Joe's.
All right, so I'll just walk this back. Rob, your comments?
I don't really have much to report. Um, residents, stay hydrated. It is very hot out there. Um, in anything that you do hydrate, hydrate, hydrate. That's it.
All right, thank you. Kevin, yours?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, last week I had the opportunity to attend the finance uh meeting with uh Darcy and the mayor and Kate, and just to commend Kate and her department on doing a great job. Um, it's very labor intensive. It's a lot of, a lot of deep dives that they do every week and um, it's helped make the community what it is. Uh, if the real estate market will start going in our favor, all her hard work will come to fruition along with their staff. So um, it was short and sweet, and she runs a pretty tight ship. So I want to commend her on that, and that's all I really have.
Yeah, and I I would wholeheartedly agree with all that, because I was at that same meeting, and I told her, keep steering that ship in the same direction. We should do just fine. Um, all right, first of all, is is Craig still with us? Because I I question I have for Craig is is what are, what are we, where are we with uh uh Poppy Street?
Yeah, so. I have, um, I've got a tentative verbal agreement from two of them that they would provide the easements for a minimal cost on the easement of one was twenty-one hundred, one was twenty-five hundred. And the third person finally contacted me today. Um, they would like me to come out and talk to him a little more and mark the actual area. So I think we're making headways. Um, if they agree to what, um so what I did is the one refused to give the easement for nothing, so I established a cost. And then that I offered that to the second person and then the third. So um, if all of this goes through, it'd be about sixty-five hundred dollars for the three easements, which is pretty reasonable.
Which Oak Grove will pick up?
Well, yeah, I guess that'd be the next step of to make sure they're gonna pay for that.
Well, it's on their side of the road, so I would suggest that would be the way to go. Um, in my own opinion anyways. Why should we pay for the easements when we're taking care of our own? I just wanna, of course, that's dealing with Oak Grove. So that cost, by the way, is a lot cheaper than what what Chuck from MSA alluded to, that it could be a lot more money. Um, so you've done very well there. I've talked to a couple neighbors already, uh, that you probably have mentioned already, the Tamlin, uh, uh, Charles Tamlin, and I've also talked to my neighbor Arlen, Raul Street, so I know they were on board with it to get the change done. I know Joe said that one resident came from Oak Grove uh to our city hall commenting about Poppy Street, and he directed them to uh the mayor and one of their council members for discussion. So uh, but that's cheap cost for the easements, but I definitely would have to say that I'm not in favor of us picking up the cost of those easements to get the road project done on their side. Um, anything other than that, if the easements go down, uh, do we have, is this project gonna be done next year, you think?
Yep, so we do have one easement to acquire on our side. I'm just kind of waiting to uh pull the trigger here to see if the Oak Grove residents are on board, and then we'll probably move forward with that one also. And there's no reason why we couldn't start this in the spring.
Okay, and then one other question I have for you on this is is that sewer line easement that we're probably talking about, is I think that's what you're mentioning or or thinking about. But we've talked about that sewer line being relocated if possible, uh, depending on what the cost is, so we get it on our side. Um, I just don't understand why a sewer line that is for our sides of the street starts on Oak Grove and comes over to us. Oh, I think while we tear up the road, we should look at relocating that sewer line if the cost is not prohibitive. Uh, so that we don't have to deal with them again in the future on this road. Please, very much please on that. I have enough health problems without going through this again. I could tell you that right now. Um, anything else you have to say on that one, Craig at all?
Oh, but I'll probably reach out to Joe tomorrow. We can discuss if we want to run this by Lorne um from Oak Grove right now or um, go from there again.
So I'd say I sure hope to lock this in. Like I say, if I recall, Chuck had had alluded to higher pricing for those easements, so. And he was supposed to, a year ago, have gotten out there and talked to the same people you have. So good job that you've been able to do that. Um, I don't, you know, I I'm sure it was not easy, but at the same time, uh, the costs are a lot less than he projected. So that's good. This project should move forward and get this road done. Um, all right, thank you, Craig, once again. I want to give an update to the council on the uh liquor muni, by the way. Um, the framing was supposed to have started today. It it didn't start today, of course, of the weather, which I was hoping for more rain, but it didn't happen, and that's one good day. I I'm 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 laxing them on anytime that we can get rain. I have no problem with rescheduling, but um uh, the uh, the footings are in, the frost walls are up, the uh re- relocation of the utilities is done. Uh, all the plumbing is inside and and uh drainage lines are all set to go, so uh, they'll be, they should have done a pressure check on the uh, on the uh plumbing today. Uh, barring the weather, and I think they were able to do that, by the way, and tomorrow they will start uh framing. Um, so and by the end of the week, we should see a slab poured, um, and then move on with this construction in a bigger way. Um, where we are today, I want to have Command uh Miles, our architect, Parrish from Public Works, and Jason, our Public Works Director, and myself. Um, I don't like pat myself on the back, but at this point in time, I've gotten this, had to light a fire under this individual construction company to get them where we are, and I will continue doing that till we get this thing up here, because this project has to come in uh with, within budget and has to be built right, and so far, still good. Uh, we've had caught caught a couple things we didn't know about through the delays, which was the sewer line, the cast iron piping, which we replaced, which is good. Um, so right now, again, we have a a temporary uh uh, you know, short-term storage at the water treatment facility, facility, water tower, rather. Locktum storage or at the um, at the uh wastewater facility. So lumber is at those two places. We did not leave them on site for six days on the holiday. We're not take chances with our lumber. They were hauled away and secured and in a security site at both areas. And tomorrow, if you, I don't know if you've seen that, but they have a lull there. The framers have a lull, so they'll be able to get their material out of the water treatment plant, and we will forklift over the material from the wastewater tomorrow as they start the framing. So um, we are on course right now again to start moving this project in a big way, where you'll see some real big changes coming about, uh, and physical changes. Um, but right now, I I I can only tell you that uh I'm impressed with the subs of the company. I'm not impressed that much with the project manager at this point and scheduling. Uh, in fact, I even let him know inspections, by the way. Inspections are a three-day notice by Metro West and a twenty-four-hour minimum uh notice for rescheduling. I let him know that because he had some issues with that. Uh, I don't understand why from one city to another city, you can't find out how inspections are done with twenty-five years' experience, but nevertheless, he knows now the right way to do it. So anyway, uh, his subs are very good, by the way, from what I've seen so far, the cement, uh, the footings and and frost walls, insulation, plumbing, everything, that was very impressive at this point. Um, and so we'll keep on top of that and see this project coming up. So now you'll start to see some structure. Should start moving a lot faster now at this point. So that's one thing I want to bring up to date here. By the way, I also had a second bid on the fobs for the uh city hall change that we're doing for security. Uh, that amount came in six thousand four dollars and forty-one cents less than the first one. So we have dropped that down from sixteen plus thousand down to ten thousand plus. I'm also want to let you know, um, I've toned down that project. I'm not putting up a sheet rock wall uh or with bulletproof glass. I'm putting up a basically um, security glass up uh uh just below the uh light fixture door, you know, a swing down so you could change light bulbs. You'll see it now. I have two companies doing this. Uh, JA Glass is is already, is bidding on it a lot, and I'll meet with one person from Art Glass on Wednesday to get a second bid on it. But I've toned down it because I looked at it and I thought to myself, you know, it it might have been too much of an overkill and maybe a statement to the public that is an overkill, and I don't want people walking in or be afraid of our city hall. I don't want them, uh, you know, in a situation, and why are we going this far out? Do I believe in some security there? Yes, I do. I think an issue was brought to us by two staff members that have to be addressed, and we are doing that. So um, I will, I will keep you abreast of the of the bed with the change on it. So basically, it's gonna be some aluminum framing and a quarter inch or half inch uh uh security glass, which is laminated, laminated on both sides. You'll see that basically what it's gonna be is the plexiglass you see now for the pandemic will just be thicker and more secure than what it is now. Um, and that way, and that that should be ample enough. I've run it by our, by our Lisa and Jenny, and they're, they're satisfied with that along with Kate. So I think it's a good way to go. Uh, as far as the fobs and that, I've explained to you before, the two panic buttons plus the door security is that we're doing. Um, but um, that bit again dropped by six thousand dollars. So that's very good news there. So I'll keep you abreast of those numbers. Um, but like I say, again, I think we're gonna, this idea that I came up with will give us security, uh, make our our staff secure in their mind and not be so overwhelming to the city residents who come into our city council chambers, our city hall rather. So I think it's a good way to go. Sometimes you just have to look outside the box to get a better idea, and I'm always willing to do that. So um, on that, like I say, again, the bid is lower, so we're looking good there. Um, uh, actually, and by the way, and I, and and I talked to Todd about the wall. Uh, we both agree the wall uh will slow someone down, which is the key for them to hit that panic button and get the police there. Um, it's just a matter of what level of wall we're gonna put up, and I think now we've come up with a much better idea. So you'll see this in uh and play as it comes up here, they get the numbers together. So um, on that, uh, I want to thank staff uh for all your hard work. I hope you had an enjoyable Fourth of July. I know it was really hot here, but for the next week, we're gonna hit the seventies. Maybe some slight jacket weather, which um I actually look forward to right now, because the heat is really bad. I mean, I I don't mind hot, but when you're sat, when you're able to sit, stand there and sweat, it's really hot. And this is one of the hottest summers I've seen in a long time. So um, I want to commend staff again on all the work getting us through the Zoom meetings and the pandemic and everything else we've gotten to point. Hopefully, we're gonna move a little forward now and uh get back to some in-person and some normality, um, or maybe not fully yet, but somewhat better than what we've had. So um, I look forward to that. Um. Nothing else I have to mention here. I think if you have any questions at any time on the liquor mini, just give me a call at any time. Um, I'm more than willing to uh discuss and keep you abreast of what's going on, because I'm there all the time, and I'm keeping on the top of this company as much as I possibly can. I want to see this turn out right for for the city as well as for our future projects down the road. Because if we can't pull this off, we're not gonna be able to go forward with any other projects. I can guarantee you that. We are gonna, I can guarantee you, we are gonna pull this off. I think it's a good addition. If you get a chance to look at it, you'll see how big twenty-four hundred I think it's a good addition. If you get a chance to look at it, you'll see how big twenty-four hundred square feet is. I think it's gonna be a real plus to that, uh, that, uh. Uh, uh, that liquid media in a big ways. And I think it's a smart move by the city to do this now before grocery stores actually get liquor and up and running. Um, I think this is a much of a preventive, pro, a preemptive move that's gonna benefit us in the long term. Um, and I think it's, and I think it's one of those seeds we'll plant, gain big dividends down the road from. So, um, I think it's, again, the right course of action. So again, any questions, just give me a call on it. I'll run you through anything you want to know. Um, and also on the security of the, of the city hall too, by the way. So, um, on that, uh, Joe, do we have any further business to discuss?
Uh, no further business, Your Honor. I think we covered it all.
I see that you have the ambassador of goodwill to our.
I do. I'll let you say hi to him, Steve, because I know you're his godfather. So you wanted to point him and say hi at his last Zoom meeting here, so.
Uh, I, I, I've dubbed Jimmy Coleman, the ambassador of goodwill to our city. And, uh, I'm just always teasing about that. Nice to see you, Jimmy. Okay. Without any fur- further business here, um, I'm gonna close this meeting on July sixth on Tuesday at seven thirty-eight. Thanks, everybody. I'll see you at SD fifteen. Bye-bye.